Meeting of the Greenwood Common Council on Monday, February the 3rd. If you would please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. After the pledge, please remain standing. We'll be led in prayer this evening by Steve Shillman of Southland Community Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's read together.
Lord God, we first pause tonight before this meeting to thank you for this community. Thank you for the women and men that you have raised up to lead us. And we pray tonight for them. As they deliberate, we ask for your wisdom, your guidance, and that you would give them every thought to allow them to vote and deliberate for your glory. We also pause and thank you so much for our mayor, and we ask for you to give him healing and strength in these days. And we pray for all of our community servants, for our first responders, and those who work in the offices that do so much to benefit us as citizens of this city. We ask, oh Lord, that you would bless us with your presence, your grace, and your provision, and we'll give you glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. Roll call. President. Here.
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 We have a quorum. All of you should have received copies of the minutes from the last regular meeting on January the 20th. Do you have a motion?
I saw both.
Motion by Mr. Bates, second by Mr. Dine. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? CNN roll call on the minutes.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Finnelton.
Aye.
And Williams.
Aye.
Minister approved nine to zero. Reports, Corporation Council.
You should have received the copy of the litigation report in the items semi-monthly on SharePoint. If you have any questions about either of those, please contact me.
All right, anything from the controller at this time? Committee or Board reports? The RDC has not met since our last meeting. Any other committee or board reports? All right, CNN, this is a time for the audience, and before we get to the first item on that is to really introduce the Mayor of Greenwood, Mr. Bart Brothers.
Thank you, Mr. President, Council members. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here today as well. Today's a special opportunity for the city in some ways, and in some ways it's a big loss. Our Officer Danny Skeel's been with us for 33 years. He's retiring at the end of the month, along with his K-9 partner King is going to retire with him as well. I've known Danny and his wife since high school. They're a great family. They've been great people in our city. But the one good thing we get to see about Danny retiring is his son, who's in the back, will be taking his place in two weeks. So from one Skeel to the next, we can keep the tradition going.
Yeah, that's right.
So we prepared two proclamations I'd like to read. It says, "In honor of Officer Dan Skeel, February 29th, 2020. Whereas Dan Skeel was hired by the Greenwood Police Department on June 5th, 1987, and whereas Dan Skeel has been a member of the K-9 officer for 30 years and a K-9 trainer, and he's worked with four K-9 partners, Marco, Ruth, Yogi, and King. Moreover, on February 5th, 1997, Dan Skeel and his K-9 partner apprehended suspects who were burglarizing the Valuista Country Club. And on March 10th, 1997, Dan Skeel and his partner apprehended an armed robbery suspect who had robbed the K-Mart. And whereas December 2010, Dan Skeel and his K-9 partner located an autistic child that had wandered away from home. And whereas Dan Skeel has been married to Kimberly for 35 years, and they have a son, Tanner. Whereas the City of Greenwood would like to thank Dan Skeel for all of his years of service and commitment that he has put into our city. Now therefore, I, Mark W. Myers, the Mayor of the City of Greenwood, Indiana, do hereby proclaim, February 29th, in honor of Dan Skeel." Congratulations. And in honor of K-9 King for February 29th, 2020. Whereas K-9 King became a member of the Greenwood Police Department in October of 2013, and has served honorably alongside his handler, Officer Dan Skeel, for six years and four months. Whereas K-9 King has responded to 2,197 calls for service as a police K-9. And whereas King has played a vital role in the removal of endangered drugs and offenders off the streets of Greenwood. And whereas K-9 King has participated in 10 vehicle pursuits. And K-9 King has made physical apprehensions of five suspects attempting to evade capture. And whereas K-9 King will retire happily in his new southeast Tennessee mountainside home with his family, Dan and Kimberly Skeel. Now therefore, I, Mark W. Myers, the Mayor of Greenwood, Indiana, proclaim, February 29th, in honor of K-9 King. Congratulations.
Thank you. At this time, Steve Woskowski with the Greenwood Community Band.
Going to open up with thanks for all of our great support from the Mayor, City Council, Parks Department, schools, and just the city in general. Talking with several of the other community bands that come to our festival. We know that we're actually very, very lucky to have the kind of support that we do have here in Greenwood. When I got the contract about two weeks ago from Amanda, I actually sent a note back because I thought there might have been a mistake because our funding had gone up. And since we didn't request or expect it, that was an awfully nice surprise. So with that, you know, huge thanks. I let the band know about that at our rehearsal last week, and they wanted to relay our sincere thanks for that. The 2019 year in review, just some quick kind of stats on where we have been. The band membership actually went up about another 5% from this time last year. And under Randy's direction, we're still continuing to do more challenging and diverse musical selections. And from responses with audience surveys, we've done and shown that that's been noticed and enjoyed. Our concert attendance has grown very steadily from where we were, and several ideas and processes from our joint venture with the Franklin College Marketing Class are actually showing good results. This past year, we've added some new things where we had smaller ensembles from within the group. We went out and helped with the inaugural Restorable Town Greenwood Home Walking Tour, and had several groups playing background music for the Christmas agglow celebration at the library. And as always near the holidays, we have groups going out to various Greenwood area assisted living centers. For 2020, besides the eight local events in the park and high school, we're actually going to be spreading Greenwood's tradition around the state this year. The band will be performing the National Anthem for pre-game ceremonies at both an Indy Fuel Hockey Game at the Coliseum and also an Indians baseball game at Victory Field again. And we also just accepted a request to be one of the guest bands in Nobleville's Summer Concert Series on August 16th. So just besides the Greenwood stuff, we're actually getting all around. Our next concert on February 23rd at the high school is kind of neat. We're adding the thing where we're going to have about a dozen high school students from various schools around the area will be doing side-by-side performances with the band, and it'll give them some experience in a different setting than what they're used to, and also start letting them know that there is musical life after high school and college. And one of our missions with the band is not just doing what we do, but still pursuing service groups outside of music to partner with us at our concerts. Last year, one of the park ones, we did that with Johnson County Animal Shelter that they were able to piggyback off of us to be able to raise some money for their needs. So we do welcome inquiries from any kind of nonprofit that would like to partner up with that and be able to reach our audience for their needs. Another neat thing for this year is about half of our membership is actually going to be traveling to Irem to perform a series of concerts between June 12th to the 22nd. But just to be clear and transparent on this, the band itself covers all expenses for that. It's a self-funded thing, so none of the money from the city or any of our other donation goes for that. It's actually paid for by the travelers. But so even besides going around the state, we're going to be partway around the world. The community concert in the park, we do our festival in August. That's grown even more again because this year there's two more bands that have expressed interest. So it's kind of a tradition now that we're drawing. So I actually have six bands that I'll be drawing three for available slots. So the other thing with our festival, the community band from Bloomington has contacted me because they just did a nice amphitheater in one of their parks, and they like the festival here so much, they want to copy what we've been doing. So even with that, we're kind of planting seeds in other communities. So with all that, I'd like to think that we're doing a good job with various activities and representing Greenwood, remember, you know, our own membership as well as the audience. So does anybody have any questions for us?
Where are you going in Irem?
It's going to be basically around Dublin, and then everything's quite small enough. I guess everything's in a big bus tour.
I'm sure to go by and see Molly McGuire.
To see what?
Molly McGuire. If you don't know who that is, you'll find out there later.
Well, that's part of why I'm going is to learn. But yeah, there's all kinds of stops that we're going to be touring around the area.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Woskowski. The, we do have the contract here tonight, and the amount that the city supports the band is $5,000, which we approved that amount in our budget for this year, half of which comes from the mayor's budget, half comes from the council budget. So I would entertain a motion to approve the contract for 2020 for the Greenwood Community Band. Motion by Mr. Dine, second by Ms., I'm sorry, motion by Mr. Lexi, second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. At this time, we set aside an opportunity for people in the audience to address the council concerning items that are on the agenda. And if you are here tonight and would like to address the council, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and there is a five-minute time limit.
Good evening, Randy Good, 1157 Central Park Boulevard, South Greenwood, Indiana, or 6143. The one thing that I wanted to raise on the agenda tonight is Resolution 2001, where we're looking to set this up for tax abatements. And I would just ask that when you consider that, and instead of the standard 10-year abatement, if we do issue abatements, that we back that down to five years. And the reasoning behind that is because this is not guaranteed. This is strictly a speculative warehouse or manufacturing facility. To my knowledge, when I read everything today, there is no tenant at this time. It's, we are gaining not a whole lot by doing this, so please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dale Harbinger, 1153 Gilgan Drive. And I wanted to talk on two topics. Issue ordinance 2006 about the sewer increases. As you recall, a few years ago, we passed the ordinance that increased every year automatically our sewer rates for citizens. And at the same time, we said that the business sewer hookup rate was so complex that it needed to be looked at and decided to just give it away to businesses. And now I feel like I and everybody else is paying for all these, you know, we have to make it bigger, super sewers for all these new warehouses and businesses, and it feels like I'm paying for it. And I would like the city to reinstall, reinstate the hookup fees for business on the sewers. I think that they should pay their share, something fairly simple in my view. I also wanted to agree with Mr. Gooden on Resolution 2001. That's a million dollars of tax abatements or gifts to somebody who's promising $15 an hour wages, where the Indiana Economic Development says they got $28 average for all their wages last year. In fact, they didn't have anything down to $15, which would be basically promising ongoing wages, actually below ongoing wages in exchange for a million dollars. I look at their Exhibit A, and they have really three different views of what they're going to build. One view of the building has all this landscape, the other one has less landscape, and you have the plot itself, which doesn't have room for any landscape to speak of. And I don't know which one's lying, or which one's misleading, or anything like that. And I don't know if it's just the landscape that's misleading, or the building itself. You recall the apartment building, the luxury carpet building, and all the artist renditions of that that don't match what's being built. And I think that before you pass these things, you need to get something firm that you can hit with a stick that's honest. And when you can't tell which is going to look like, or it's going to be just another ugly eyesore on Main Street of a concrete warehouse so close to the road you can't add turning lanes, with no landscape, a square pond with no anything, you know, I don't know, a million dollars in packages that they supposedly will pay is not worth the eyesore. If they promise nothing, we give a million dollars, and we get the eyesore for the next hundred years. I think this should be sent back. We have buildings for homes, standards, for artistic design and architecture. We need it on this ugly excuse for a warehouse. It does not deserve our money. Thank you.
Mr. Brian Moore, 27, Chloey Lane, Greenwood, Indiana, 46143. I'm here to address the about the postal office issue tonight.
I'm sorry, Brian, that's not on the agenda tonight. If you wish to address that, you have to wait till the end of the meeting.
Okay, okay, thank you. Anyway.
Anyone else wants to address the council tonight concerning items that are on the agenda? All right, seen none. Ordinances and Resolutions, first reading, ordinance 2005.
An ordinance amending the 2020 salary ordinance, common council ordinance number 1928, to include the Director of Human Resources position in the Human Resources Department sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion? Motion by Ms. Gibson, second. Second by Mr. Dine.
I have a question amendment to this. We discussed that last time, that there did appear to be an error in the percentages of the funding sources. So I recommend a motion to amend ordinance number 2005 to correct the funding percentages of the Director of Human Resources salary as follows. General Hahn, 70%, operating, 10%, Stormwater, 10%, MBH, 5%, and Parks, 5%.
Motion by Mr. Bates, second by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion on the amendment to ordinance 2005? CNN roll call on the amendment to ordinance 2005.
Aye. Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Finnelton.
Aye.
And Williams.
Aye.
Ordinance 2005 is amended to vote at nine to zero. Any discussion on ordinance 2005 as amended? CNN roll call, first reading, ordinance 2005 as amended.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Finnelton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
And Bates.
Aye.
Ordinance 2005 as amended passes first reading nine to zero. Resolution 2002.
A resolution approving an interlocal agreement between the City of Greenwood and Pleasant Township, Johnson County regarding fire protection sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion?
Still no.
By Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
By Mr. Hopper. Any discussion? All right, seen none, roll call. Resolution 2002, first reading.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Finnelton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
And Campbell.
Aye. Resolution 2002 passes first reading nine to zero. Second reading, ordinance 2001. I'm sorry, yeah, my fault. Still, first reading, resolution 2003.
A resolution of Greenwood Common Council approving an interlocal agreement between the City of Greenwood, City of Franklin, Town of Whirland, and Johnson County regarding allocation of federal highway safety improvement program grant funds for rail corridor safety improvements and related matters sponsored by Hopper, Williams, and Gibson.
Do you have a motion?
I saw it.
Motion by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates. Wow, you guys, you guys would want to get out of here in a hurry tonight. Any discussion, resolution 2003? CNN roll call, resolution 2003, first reading.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Finnelton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
And Dine.
Aye.
Resolution 2003 passes first reading nine to zero. Second reading, ordinance 2001.
An ordinance to reestablish a Greenwood Cumulative Capital Development Fund pursuant to Indiana Code, Section 36, 915.5, sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion?
I saw both.
Motion by Mr. Bates, second by Ms. Gibson. This is scheduled for a public hearing tonight. We'll open it up for a public hearing. If you are here tonight and wish to speak for or against ordinance 2001, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please. Seen no one. Close the public hearing. Any discussion on the council, ordinance 2001? CNN roll call, ordinance 2001, second reading.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Finnelton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
And Gibson.
Aye.
Ordinance 2001 passes second reading nine to zero. Ordinance 2003.
An ordinance amending Greenwood Municipal Code, 1993, Chapter 6, Article 9, Section 6309, to increase the user fee for trash collection and curbside recycling services sponsored by Campbell.
Do you have a motion? Motion by Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion on the council?
Yes, Mr. President, I still believe that there's elements of unfairness in this ordinance, and my take on it is the same as at once, as we introduced.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Any other discussion or statements?
There's type of captions that subtract much.
That's only on the.
Okay, okay.
It's not actually on that.
All right.
Any other discussion? Seen none. Roll call, ordinance 2003, second reading.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Finnelton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Nay.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
And Hill.
Ordinance 2003 passes second reading eight to one. Resolution 2001.
A resolution declaring certain area within the City of Greenwood an economic revitalization area and qualifying certain real property improvements for tax abatement and setting the time and place for a public hearing. C.A. Industrial Holdings, L.L. Steeds and Entity to be formed, sponsored by Hopper and Campbell.
Do you have a motion? Motion by Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dine. And we have an amendment?
Yes, because of the suspension of rules, this is able to be advertised on adoption and probably adopted earlier. So I do recommend a motion to amend Section 8 to change the hearing date from March 16th, 2020, to February 19th, 2020.
Motion, motion to amend by Ms. Gibson, second. Second by Mr. Williams. Any discussion on the amendment? CNN roll call on amendment to resolution 2001?
Lexi.
Aye.
Finnelton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
And Hopper.
Aye.
Resolution 2001 is amended to vote at nine to zero. Any discussion on resolution 2001 as amended?
Mr. President, I would like to address this. After the last meeting where I voted against this, I think there was a little confusion as to why. I just wanted to detail that.
Sure.
It is not that this is a speculative building. It's not that there is an abatement. I know there is a need for speculative buildings. My issue with this is the 10-year real property abatement that we would give a warehouse that were coming in, or distribution center, what have you, that we know what's going in there, how many jobs, what the pay is. So my issue is not that there is an abatement. My issue is with the terms of it. If those were adjusted, I would probably look at this a different way.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sherman?
I have to hear your question.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Sherman, or any further discussion on the council? All right, seen none, then roll call, resolution 2001 as amended.
Finnelton.
Nay.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Nay.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
And Lexi.
Nay.
Resolution 2001 passes first reading, or second reading, six to three. New business, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions, ordinance 2006.
An ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Greenwood, Johnson County, Indiana, concerning the construction, additions, and improvements to the sewer works of the city, authorizing the issuance of revenue bonds to provide funds for the payment of the costs thereof, authorizing the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of the system, safeguarding of the interests of the owners of such revenue bonds and other matters connected therewith, including the issuance of notes in anticipation of bonds and refueling, or notices inconsistent therewith, sponsored by Bates, Dine, and Williams.
Mr. Wright?
Okay, so this is the funding for Phase Two of our Western Regional Interceptor Project. We will once again be looking to go through the State Revolving Fund, which will give us better interest rates. We are requesting a maximum of $37 million. The first $25 million of that is going to be a subsidized rate. Right now, that rate's at 2.30%. It may go up or down at the beginning of the next quarter, but it probably won't be much of a change. Currently, we're estimating the remainder at 3.5% as a worst-case scenario. I point out that last year, when we did the Phase One bond, we got it at 2.55%. So it is, we would expect better than that, but our worst case is three and a half. Right now, the State Revolving Fund is getting ready to do an issuance with Fort Wayne, and so that's kind of our timing reason is we can get in on that one to get the money secured. We are looking at a late summer start for Phase Two. So once we have the funding secured, we can sign the contract with the contractor and get that altied up to start as soon as Phase One finishes.
All right, any questions, Mr. Wright? Yes?
What impact will this have on our sewer rates?
This is already figured into our sewer rates as far as the last time that they were increased. Any changes right now on sewer rates would probably be more related to the treatment Any changes right now on sewer rates would probably be more related to the treatment costs that we're getting from citizens, more so than any of our debt issues. This was built in because we knew it was coming last time.
So there should be, no, should be an increase?
Not from this, no.
Okay.
You won't see an increase because of this.
The treatment cost, this is right off the cuff, but can you tell us how those have increased over the last couple of years or a few years?
I know that since the legal agreement, they've been increasing. Eventually, they will be three times what we were paying. And then it will go to what citizens tells us is the actual cost of service. So we have no way to predict after 2025 what that rate's going to change by, from the year.
You say it's increased by three times?
By the time it gets to 2025, it will be over three times what we were paying when we started that agreement. And then after that, it can go up as much as they say it needs to.
All right.
But did we, when we started that agreement, weren't we already in the hold of, I mean, we had so many billions of dollars embedded?
Well, we had the capital contributions to them, yes. But what came about was they couldn't raise their rates on their regular residential customers unless they raised the rates on the surrounding units that were using their services as well. Most of us were getting very low rates for a lot of years. But the I U R C would not let them raise on residential customers without also raising ours up to the same level. So basically, we're getting a fast catch-up on that.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Wright? All right, thank you very much. Miss Laney's Business, the audience. Now, if you're a member of the audience who would like to address the council concerning items that are not on the agenda, please step to the podium, give your name and address for the record. And there is a five-minute time limit.
Brian Moore, 27, Cloe Lane, Greenwood, Indiana. As reference about the Greenwood Post Office, Annex Building. If we don't keep it downtown, we're going to lose completely. There's like seven hundred boxes, the small post office, the big post office on Smith Valley does not have room, the pity boxes, they're going to refund all that money. This downtown location is a profit for the post office because the post office itself is for, there's no federal dollars or local tax dollars involved. I don't see on the property now, but we got, instead of seeing a signed two-year contract, the post office has to have a five-year contract. Because I've talked to people in Washington, DC. I'm working with some other people in Washington, DC right now, haven't got it all done yet. But if we don't get this done by, no later than April 1st, the train server wants to move and then want to close this there down. But once this thing closed down, it will not be coming back. That's, that's the rest I've told. There's post offices going up and come back downtown. But we got to find a place downtown. There is room downtown, but we just got to find a place for it. They had to have a dock, so they got a little melon, so you people, the business downtown Greenwood that uses people don't want to deal with the big post office because no room over. That's why the post office has to pay the church next door for the parking lot. They could have had the property next door to the church because they had the room they could build on the west side of the building. But due to the fact that the church wanted to double value cash flow of that church property, so now we're on the list for the federal government to have our post office rebuilt within, it could be next five, 10 years. But we're also with SignBuild. SignBuild's growing, we're growing. But that's why they had to wipe the post office back up because Greenwood didn't have no room. Right now, they got stuffed with two trellis in the back of the building storage. Greenwood branch over in Annex has storage room in an after standard of records that they didn't have room downtown. So downtown's running out of room, all these post offices are downtown. I wonder if the local government can work with the federal government and come away, solution to go ahead and build a new post office with any, using tip-diffing money, use local money, use federal money, work together as a team, and we go ahead and build a new post office, then the post office eventually can reverse the city for what they paid out. I think that'd be the best idea ever. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you. I've asked the city attorney to give us an update on this situation.